Sounded loud enough.
All right, you're on.
I'll call a meeting to order at 6:30. We will start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Karen Winchester?
Here.
Derek Burton?
Here.
Steve Ruth?
Here.
George Cullis?
Here. Agenda approval. All items listed, oh, I'm sorry, agenda approval. Chair would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Moved by Clerk Winchester, support by Trustee Burton to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Four zero. Consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial. They do not require discussion by the Township Board and they will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If discussion is desired on an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will automatically be moved to the last item under new business. Chair would entertain a motion?
And make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Clerk Winchester is of support.
Support.
Support by Trustee Ruth. Roll call, please.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Karen Winchester?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes. Motion carries. Four zero. Public hearings, the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Application.
I move to open the public hearings.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Winchester, support by Trustee Burton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Is there anyone that would like to speak for the public hearing on the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Applications? Mr. Ginneman.
I'm going to speak as the Director of the Holly Area Chamber of Commerce. I actually had a business member contact me today asking questions about this process. And it is Meals on Wheels. And they would have an interest in application for Meals on Wheels, receiving some CBDG funds. They do a lot naturally for seniors in the Holly area. They serve their food, they prep it out of Hollywoodlands and have volunteers that deliver that to various senior and homebound residents in the community.
Okay, Meals on Wheels, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on the Community Development Block Grant Application for the CDBG Funds for 2023? Not appearing? I would move to close the public hearing?
Support.
Moved by Supervisor Cullis, support by Clerk Winchester to close the public hearings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Presentations, we have none. I will move to report. Trustee Burton?
Yes, so we had the Planning Commission meeting last night. Just wanted to make everyone aware is that the, we will be discussing the amendments to Holly Township Code of Ordinance regarding accessory buildings on December 6th as well as beginning the process for the master plan review on December 6th as well.
Is that complete?
That's all I have, yes.
Trustee Ruth?
Nothing for me.
Nothing new at all yet?
Not really.
Okay.
We're looking forward to the CBD grant, but barely.
Okay.
They never, you know, they can't spend it.
Yeah, I never used it, right, I never used it.
Yeah. Okay. Clerk Winchester, report.
Yes, you had suggested that there were some people that were interested in the voter turnout?
Yes.
For the November 8th election. Precinct one, well, overall, it was 55.97%. Precinct one was 49.36. Precinct two, 53.29. Precinct three, 59.71. And four is 61.20.
Those go along last year. Or two years ago, whatever it was.
I don't remember that, that would have been a nice number, but it was one of the busiest
Yeah. First time we had
gubernatorial elections that we've ever had.
Okay. I know I'd gotten several calls asking what those numbers were. So it's good to report on that. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. From the supervisor's standpoint, on the farmstead, we have the process of dismantling the Ernst barn has started. It is different than a demolition problem, project where you would picture them coming out with a shovel and busting up things and taking it apart. This is literally dismantling it. They are on the inside of the barn and they are dismantling some of those beautiful 20, 24-inch original growth boards from the 1850s. They're, they painstakingly take them off one at a time and they mark them and they're storing them in a railroad storage container, if you will, to bring them out here. So it's a meticulous project as they go along. They will be, as they, right now, the outside of the building is still intact. And as they take that apart, a lot of that wood is, its life is over. However, they feel they can save enough boards to probably do one end of the barn in the original wood. And then the other three sides will get a new skin on them. So it is a process, but it has started. And in the next week or so, you'll see the amount of the farmsteads, they start to dig and put in the foundation. This is going to be a different foundation than the, than when we picked up the barn and put it down. They are going to use the stones from the foundation there. They have a process in which they build this foundation with the stones in it again. I know the four cornerstones are cut stone. Two of them are blue, red, one looks like granite. And they will mark those and the original cornerstones will go back in their respective corners. So just from a historical preservation standpoint. This barn is from the 1850s. And it will be reminiscent of the barn that was originally part of the Holly Farmstead that got torn down years ago. The barn that stands there now is circa 1910. It was a larger, more modern barn because after the Industrial Revolution, they had farm equipment that they needed to park in the building, unlike in the 1850s. So it'll be a nice addition to the barn and historically helped the story. Ernst barn was a dairy barn back there. So that project is underway.
Okay.
I don't know if I have anything else to report on. If I come up with something later, I'll bring it back. Let's move on to public comment. On agenda items only. Members of the public can address the board on the agenda items only, once recognized by the supervisor. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may extend this time by a majority vote. Prior to addressing the board, members of the public shall state their name and address for the record. A second public comment is available after new business for all other comments. Thank you for your cooperation. Do we have anybody that's interested in public comment on agenda items? Mary Blanchard?
Mary Blanchard, 3444 Old Creek Drive. I would just like to speak on the Sparks Grant application. And I would like for the board to support that. As far as the Fish Lake Road property and development with that, the new kayak launch has been installed. It still has some future issues with it. And this would be a nice addition to that with the Sparks Grant. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on agenda items? Sue Julian?
Sue Julian, with a cold, excuse me, 3505 West Bradley Lake Road. I would prefer to answer questions regarding the Sparks Grant resolution at the time of the proposal, if that's okay with you?
Yes, if we have any, I will refer to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I give people a map of the area that we're talking about?
Absolutely.
Came by the other day, it looks great. Fixed the bump of the railroad tracks. But that's pretty level, so.
Anyone wish to speak for public comment? None appearing, I will move to old business, the Holly Township Tractor. I did finally have an opportunity to meet with Harvey Sorensen on the tractor that is, that had been donated to the township many years ago. And he, along with his tractor club, basically said that there's not much to that tractor, it won't be of any use to the farmstead going forward. And unfortunately, because of the type of tractor it is, the model it is, it's not popular in the tractor clubs. So there is nobody out there that desires to purchase it. I know, when I talked to the tractor club at the 4H Fair, I asked them if there would be somebody interested in the tractor for a restoration project. And the guy looked at me with 20-plus tractors in the tent and he said, "Do you see any?" And as I asked that question, every head there was going, "Nope." So Harvey felt if we could scrap it and get something for it, that he felt that was probably the best that we could do. So the question tonight is, what does the board want to do? How do you want to treat it? Because it is a piece of property that belongs to the township presently. It is currently parked at the DPW property in the village. They allowed us to move it there when we had to empty the old fire hall. And it's been sitting in the backyard. And if you remember a few meetings back, I had brought you pictures of its current state.
Okay. Yep.
Kind of forget how good it looked, or does it look?
No.
No, it looked pretty rough, that's why I brought the pictures in. The tires were cracked. Because that was my other question, were there salvageable parts from it?
Or just could it be an ornament for some, for a new, whatever?
Well, it's not even a typical, like, the old antique tractor looking, it's a different-looking beast.
It's tall and square.
Well, that's why I said it's not very popular. Nobody wanted it. If anybody has driven down East Holly Road, Kurt Smith has quite a collection of tractors. And I asked him if he would have any interest. I didn't get the sentence out of my mouth and he would
No, don't want it.
Yeah, so.
And it was donated.
Well, and that might be why it was donated. In fact, Harvey and I had that conversation at the time it was donated. He said that might be why it got donated, because they didn't know what to do with it either. So. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion that we scrap the Holly Township Tractor.
Support.
Trustee Burton and Trustee Ruth with the motion and support. Any further conversation? Discussion? Now, because it has a monetary value, let's go ahead and do a roll call.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Karen Winchester?
Yes.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes, motion carries four zero. Now we're going to new business. Healthcare opt-out. Proposed Resolution 2022-19. Karen?
This is our annual opt-out that we usually do, that was provided to the township by the legislator, or legislation, Public Act 152, 2011. And it's, you have to do it annually.
And can you explain the difference of opting out and opting in, what that actually means?
No.
Oh. Okay.
I mean, I don't have it with me, so sorry. I didn't think to add it, I should have added the
Okay, if my understanding's correct, it has to do with whether or not township employees pay a partial? If I remember from the past, and the reason we opt-out is because we found a plan that was lower than the standard?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good memory.
You know, sometimes this stuff is so routine, I forget that
I know, but for the public
that we forget and the public doesn't know.
Well, that's why I wanted, just for the public so they understood what you're talking about. Okay. Any further discussion? Chair would entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the healthcare opt-out, proposed Resolution 2022-19.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Burton with support by Clerk Winchester. Roll call, please.
Karen Winchester?
Yes.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes, motion carries four zero. The 2022-2023 Budget Amendments, Proposed Resolution 2022-20. Karen?
This was the, we had the the Fish Lake House torn down. We hadn't considered that in the budget, I don't remember why, if it was just the timing. So we had to adjust for the maintenance line item. And then the capital project fund, we had to include the G2 testing for the farmstead in that, because we moved all the expenses and the revenues over to the capital project fund. So that's including that expense.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? Chair would entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the 2022-2023 Budget Amendments, Proposed Resolution 2022-20.
Is there support?
Support.
Trustee Burton, Trustee Ruth for support. Approval of Resolution 2022-20 Holly Township Budget Amendments. Roll call, please.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Karen Winchester?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes. Motion carries four zero. Onto number three, the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Application, Proposed Resolution 2022-21.
This is our annual application for the CDBG funds, 30% of which can be community services. We rotate annually, last year was Haven. This year would be the transportation service with the Village of Holly. We can look into Meals on Wheels for next year and how, if that fits in to the program.
I know that they received one from the
Did they? Okay, then I'll, I'll find that out.
I'll look for
It's, okay, that would be great. And then we do the Oakland County Home Improvement Program until we find other projects that we can actually spend money on and use.
So I do have one question for you. And I wasn't able to have this conversation with you because I had already had a conversation with Trustee Burton. And, oh, there's my other report. The ballot initiative for the township passed. So starting in 2024, we will have seven members on this board. And the beauty of that is, when things like this come up, we'll have an opportunity to discuss them as an administration. Because the Open Meetings Act, once I had the conversation with Derek, I was no longer allowed to talk to any remaining board member. With that, we will then be allowed for three people to have a conversation. And that's really going to help between the clerk, the treasurer, and the supervisor as an administrative team, they will be able to discuss projects. So I want to thank the voters for passing that. I know I had a lot of conversations with people and it did pass. That being said, we don't currently have seven, therefore I couldn't have this discussion. My feeling is, I wanted to find out, first of all, is there a deadline that we have to make these decisions by?
The application is due, I believe, December 15th.
The 23rd.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
That is before, or that's after our next meeting?
After.
Yes.
After. So, because my feeling is, I would like to look at possibly tabling this. And I'll tell you why. I have a problem giving this money to the village for transportation service since the transit village passed.
Yeah.
Oh, well, we don't give any.
That, we shouldn't have to give any, look, I have been out there stumping for this everywhere. They put this on the ballot, they don't have a plan, but they got the money. Now they're going to sit down and start talking about it. It makes no sense for me, for this community, to put $5,792 in a transportation fund when they're going to take $384,000 out of this township, starting this next tax bill.
But they still need the service, the service still needs to go on.
Well, and, and the village needs, at that point, they're going to have a new council. The village needs to turn to the county and say, "Okay, where's the funding? How are we going to do this?" They're, they're taking $384,000 out of here. For us to give any more money, I'd like to see us come up with something to, to assign that money to local projects.
And then you can do emergency services. You can look in the year and decide what community services you want to
I mean, that's my opinion, how does the rest of the board feel?
Well, one of the, one of the things that I liked, which I actually got from the village, was they did, and I'll get into a lot more, but I'll just touch on this. They did ADA picnic tables, benches, and trash receptacles. And I think those would be a good addition, it'd be keeping the money here. And then, you know, we can replace all the picnic tables and benches and stuff like that. So I guess with that, I will go into, again, what I'm about to discuss is not short-term for this year, but looking into the future. As many of you probably know, and I'll, I'll give you guys these. CDBG has kind of been a passion of mine since I started in this position. So with that being said, I have been in communication with Oakland County CDBG Department for quite a while and quite extensively. So I want to share some of the things that I've learned throughout my discussions with them and kind of pressing further into some issues. So the first thing being that CD, CDBG funds are allowed to be spent as long as it's within two years. So basically what that allows is us to use that funding at once, but the two-year amount. So for example, we get, you know, 19, just, just above 19,000 for program year 22, then making it 38,000. Well, if you look at the eligibility map for Holly Township, that's on their website, and which, this is the village on page two, but it's very similar. But you go to Holly Township, you'll see that there is nothing within Holly Township, the outer township, that is eligible. So with that being said, I then pressed them and told them, you know, "Look, for all intents and purposes, the village is a part of the township." To which they agreed. And with that being said, you know, we have the Township Beach in the village. I mean, we have, we have entities that are within the village that are outside our community border. So I asked then if we could use our money in the village, being that the village is a part of the township. To which they responded, "Yes, we could do that." So after I learned that, I pressed them even further, knowing now that we can use the money in the village, if us and the village can embark on the same project. So basically, what that, what that would do is, the village having $20,892 and us having 19,307, based on program year 22, is we would take that money, we can combine it for projects, knowing that they can be, you know, you can complete these within two years, thus translating into $80,398 to use for given projects in two years. So one of the things I just kind of had tossed around in my head, as, as I was just throwing all kinds of random examples at this individual, was a, some form of an ADA kayak launch. So basically what those are is, you picture in like a manufacturing setting where there's rollers, you know, and people move boxes down through, whatever. This is kind of a more complicated version of that, where a kayak sits on these rollers. Individuals who are wheelchair-bound or may have other, you know, limitations, get on a bench, they slide down the bench, and it's system getting in the kayak. Now, that, I'm not sure on as far as opportunities where there may be enough land to do that. But I do know that, that that would be an approved item with these CDBG funds. And actually, they're doing that on Union Lake, using the CDBG funds. So the reason I gave you this handout is, when you look at this, there is a certain particular part of this map that is yellowed out, considered an eligible area-wide benefit block group. So if you look at the first page, and I'll just read it off so you don't have to keep flipping back and forth. So it's the park and recreation facilities, so you can go ahead and update parks and do various things regarding recreational facilities. The entire service area must have a population that is at least 45.08% low-income. Now, if you look at this map under the community-wide eligible block grant, the portion you'll see, and, and the big portion in yellow here that you'll notice is Bush Lake, which then has the Holly Township Beach and Lakeside Park. Both of those are 47.71%, making that area eligible. So with that being said, if, if we got into this, again, and I would ask for this maybe tonight, this doesn't necessarily have to be voted on tonight, is that if we could form a work group between two members of the township, two members of the village, and maybe get parks involved as well, we could then turn this $80,398 into playground equipment or something else to benefit the beach, or lakeside park, or an ADA kayak launch. You know, once we get that work group together, we can maybe begin kind of coming up with ideas and then seeing if those are allowable or not. But those are kind of my ideas long-term. But I just want to make you all aware, and I, the reason I bring this up today too, is to try to get, if it's the board's pleasure, a committee together with approval, again, of the other agencies, so we can start coming up that way. When December rolls around next year, we'll have our application done and everything's ready to go. So basically, what we would be doing is, the township and the village applying for the same project, and then using those funds for that project. And then you're two, I mean, my assumption is you would just apply for the same thing and then just use that money all up front. Because, you know, many of these ideas and many of these big things obviously cost money. So it's not like $19,307 is going to do it. So when you combine them and you take both years, then it makes all that stuff possible.
Well, we've done that with the pavilion and a couple other projects with the village.
Okay. And it's a great partnership opportunity to
Yeah, it is. Yeah, that's a great idea. So that would be next year, not this year.
Correct. But I would like to get a committee started.
And we may be able to reprogram some money too. If we don't, if, for this year, it's possible to reprogram that money and add that. If we get it, if we can, you can get extensions in contract, they might need to pay, or, you know, to use it all up in two years. They have extended it before.
So, so the question for tonight is, do we want to table this till next month while we look at some things?
Yeah, I would move to postpone until December meeting.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Winchester, support by Trustee Burton. All in, is there any further discussion?
I had one comment for you, George, on the transportation service. If you would, if we would vote that down, couldn't Oakland County say, "Well, then, okay, you gotta, we'll give you money, but you gotta send that same vehicle down to Oakland County."
I don't know how this is going to work, that's part of the problem with that initiative, was they had no plan, they had nothing, they just wanted the money. Well, they got the money, even though our community voted no. Even though, if you look at the map, the entire northwest part of Oakland County voted no. Every community. They only voted yes down in the urbanized part of the county. So we have a tax that's going to go on 30,000 acres of farmland for mass transit. If that's the case, and they're going to take out of, out of Holly Township, Groveland, and Rose Township, and those are the three townships that have been a part of this bus service out of the Village of Holly, they're going to take over $942,000 a year for transportation in Oakland County, sorry.
For 10 years, yeah.
Well, the village still needs the transportation
No, I don't disagree, but I'm just saying, at this point, I, I think we need to find out how that's going to be handled. Because I hate to see us throw money after money on top of it. So between now and next month, we'll be able to look at that and see.
So that's going to be it, held to both of us?
All right. Any other discussion?
The only thing I want to add is, shout out to Mark Purcell, I think his name is, with that office, because he has not blocked my phone number yet, so. He's been extremely helpful, Oakland County CDBG, he's a supervisor of grants compliance.
Well, we've had conversations with, there's a lady
I talked to Mike.
I'm sorry.
Or Mike, yeah.
Yeah, Mike, yeah.
We've had conversations with him before, way back when I was on the village, they came out.
Yeah, Puker, yeah, geez, I had his name all wrong.
Puker, yeah. I was like, huh? Yeah, I mean, we've talked extensively.
Who was the lady that came out? She ran the program for a while, I mean, she, she came out.
She was really good.
And it, well, and it was, it was really complicated as to how these funds can be used. One of the reasons why Hyas had funds that they couldn't use is because they have it One of the reasons why Hyas had funds that they couldn't use, is because they have it, the age bracket, and the kids that really need the funds are outside the age bracket. And I had even talked to Alyssa Slotkin on that, and I said, hey, how do we get this fixed, so that these groups can use this money where it's needed?
Yep.
So it's a conversation with Happy.
Well, thank you for saying his name, 'cause I completely slaughtered it. That shout-out wouldn't have been any good if it wasn't my name.
That's why it hasn't blocked it.
Okay, all right, if there's no further discussion, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero, it's tabled for the December meeting. I will move on to item number four, which is the Sparks Grant application. Sue Julian, would you like to start with a little presentation for us?
Thank you. The Sparks Grant funding has come up pretty quickly, and there's a deadline of the 19th of December to get everything in, which doesn't allow for as much public discussion as I normally would propose. However, the funding comes from the federal ARPA funds, and therefore, everything must be ADA, Trustee Burton, and we definitely need to abide by that. No match is required. This is funding that's coming from the DNR, and there are various requirements, but I do think that the township of Holly has a project in combining the canoe kayak launch that Headwaters Trails is building, with the property that the township owns, which is, I've learned, has a new number, 101033, otherwise known as where the, how, the White House was torn down. That, plus the land that goes all the way back to Holly. So, there's, there are possibilities that meet the collaboration, the handicapped accessibility, the recreational focus. I think that, that Holly Township's check's always off. I would caution, though, that the, the first webinar I listened to had a thousand different communities checking in on this, because you don't normally get quick money.
Cart launch.
That's right.
But there's up to a million dollars, right?
And there will be three rounds.
Yeah.
So the recommendation is to apply for this first round, and if not approved in this round, you can kick it forward to rounds two and three. So, I've offered to write the grant, because, as you know, I've been highly involved in working on the canoe kayak launch, which is ADA, by the way. And I, I think it would be a great addition to, for the township. So I've passed out my first draft of a, a sketch of what this might be, and it's available to anyone who wants to see this. One of the other really great aspects of this grant is the planning, any public meetings, the engineering, the supervision, and the construction can all be in the grant. So, I, I really would suggest that you pass the resolution now, saying, so we can inform them that the township wants to apply. You will have to have a second resolution, when all the figures are calculated as to what it would cost. I also want to say that our Headwaters Trails group, at the, two meetings ago, passed a resolution that we wish to donate the canoe kayak launch to the township, and that can be the match for the grant, plus it'll show the intent that it's a project that's underway. So, with all these factors, I just would urge that you pass this resolution, and for the public's interest and consideration, at a later time, with some actual sketches, there can be a public hearing in which people could say, what do they think of the overall proposal, or what things they might want to add or subtract from the proposal.
So the timing of our demolition worked out very well.
Worked out very well, and we, we owe a big thanks to the road commission for using federal money to create that walking path across the river. That's always been the really high-cost item that has stopped doing something across that river.
Yeah, that's really nice.
Not quite done yet, so I put up tape, because it looks like it's done, but there are four or five things that need to be done, and my recommendation is that the township double-check that we've got all our Ts crossed and Is dotted, I was gonna say it the other way around, which would be a little hard, before accepting this, but we can, for the purpose of the grant, mutually pass a resolution saying that the Headwaters Trails group, which owns the property, is donating to the township something in the, with a specific value, and that all the work has been completed, so there's no liability for the township. Any other questions?
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
All right then, I would make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-22. Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Supervisor Cullis, support by Trustee Burton. Roll call, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Eric Burton?
Yes.
Steve Root?
Yes.
Karen Winchester?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes, motion carries four zero. That completes our new business, we will go to public comment at the end of this meeting. If anybody's interested in the Parks and Recreation Facility, the page out of the CDBG, there's a couple of extra copies here, feel free to grab them at the end of the meeting. We will enter into the last public comment, is there anybody that wished to participate in the final public comment? Remember, we need your name and address for the record when you approach the podium. Martin?
My name is Martin Andruski, I live at 2105 Middle Ridge Drive here in Holly, on the township. Essentially, my, what I wanted to do is come to address the board, actually, I was asked to, since I disagreed with Officer Hillman, to come, specifically come here and address it. In the late summer of '21, we had a home that became occupied in our subdivision, and instantly, they, they threw up a wood privacy fence that, within weeks, started falling down. They then started bracing the back of the, on vacant lots around it, and then through the winter, the side of it blew down, so they added more bracing. They've got 10-foot 2x4s, every couple feet on 45-degree angles, sitting on vacant property. And everyone in the neighborhood assumed that come spring, they would fix it. They've been tried, we've tried to approach them several times, they're not sociable, they do not respond, they don't answer the door, they don't communicate. So in April, I contacted Officer Hillman, and said, look, I live across this, it's an eyesore, it's not level, it's not plumb, it's, it's not stable, it blows down, this is certainly not something that I want to stare out on my front porch. She said, okay, I'll go out and look at it, and I said, that's great, I said, I appreciate it. Two to three weeks later, I checked in, she said she did leave a notice there, had not heard back, and was going to give them time. About a month later, I followed up with her, she, she said she did try to follow up, they did not respond to her, they did, they never responded to correspondence. It went on and on and on, and several months later, in midsummer, I said, what was, you know, going on with it? She said, they have not responded, I've gone to the door, I'm gonna keep working with them. I said, okay. In September, I contacted her again, and it actually got fairly defensive on both sides of the fence. She's, she said, you know, there's nothing more I can do. And I said, well, what is the use of having an ordinance if we're not going to follow it? They didn't pull a permit, it's not secure, they have timbers holding up the fence on both sides of it, they have 2x4s, 10-foot 2x4s stretching at 4-foot angles, off into vacant properties, and, and it's not secure in, in any way, shape, or form, let alone being, you know, an eyesore, you know, to the public and to the neighborhood. She said, well, I don't see the reason, if, and I'll paraphrase it, to use a township's funds to pursue them legally. And I said, well, are township's funds different than the taxpayers' funds, because, isn't that how the township gets their funds? And I guess she didn't like it, she said, this is the way it's gonna be, you're welcome to go talk to my five bosses at the next township meeting, well, the last one was canceled, so I couldn't come. And then she, she actually came with, with yourself, George, to our HOA meeting, and doubled down on it, and said, if you don't like the way I handle things, then you need to come to the board and talk to my five bosses. It isn't the fact that I have an issue with Officer Hillman. When, and I asked her specifically, it went from one month to two months to over six months, I said, at what point, then, will you decide that them ignoring you, and ignoring that this is not the way that the, you know, you can operate in the township, and it's against the ordinance, are you gonna draw the line and say, this is what it is? We've gone through a whole season, they moved in over a year ago, so I'm one year into it now, that this is what it is, and it's blown down many times, so when will action, you know, be proceeded, or when will, it is? I, I think the exact phrase Officer Hillman used at the RHWA meeting, that she came to talk about parking and a few other things, was, she is an officer of the law, and that's what it is. And I had asked her once on a phone call, I said, well, do, you know, as an officer of the law, do you pick and choose what you decide you're gonna enforce then? You know, if, if a Holly township, or if the village pulled somebody over for speeding, and they're doing 20 over, do they get to say, eh, not today? I don't, you know, I'm gonna go? Or is there a standard? Do we get to decide which ordinance is that we will and will not enforce, whether they're easy or difficult?
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else for public comment? None appearing? I, I will say this, Martin, if you can give me the address of that house, so I can look into it, I, I feel like there's some pieces missing, but we'll look into it. Okay, thank you.
Because there's no building permitted for the fence.
Okay.
It's not required to be permitted.
Okay. Nothing more to come before this board? Wow, we're gonna end this meeting at 7:13. What?
I think Mary wanted, Mary.
Mary, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry, you're, you're blocked partially by the podium, I didn't see you. Sorry.
That's okay. Mary Blanchard, 3444 Old Creek Drive. And I guess I would just like to speak, our politicians and our agencies. Last night, we had a meeting of the Citizen Advisory Work Group, which is the citizens' portion of MPART, which is the Michigan PFAS Action Response Team. At that meeting, Holly Water Issues was on the agenda, and we did get to speak, I got to speak, Stacy unfortunately had issues with her computer, so she was not able to speak. The problem we've been having as citizens for over three years, because I got involved three years ago, Stacy's been involved for five years, is that even though we have historic documents, some current testing that was done by the agencies and by citizens, showing that there are issues with contamination with water, with property, our agencies are able to keep things within their own boundaries. Each division of agency and each agency covers a varying amount of choices, as far as what they cover. And our issue is, is that we have felt that we need a meeting of all the agencies and all the divisions of agencies to meet and address each issue that we have. This has not happened. Last night at the meeting, I was even able to bring that up, and one of the people who spoke said, oh, we've heard, we've heard from the politicians, we've heard, okay, so if you've heard, why have the Holly residents been the only ones to call meetings here in the district? And only one meeting in Lansing by Senator Johnson, back in February 2020, that was strictly for information purposes, dealing with the manufactured home community? And then this summer, she held another meeting in Lansing for the Agency Eagle, to address certain parts of the dump. And nobody was invited from this community. Back in February 2020, the meeting was held, and there was no actual response to that meeting. The pandemic broke out, we understand that, everything shut down for a while, but I have followed up multiple times with her staff, and the four people that she specifically asked to respond to the hard parts of the manufactured home community, never responded to the senator. I don't know what we can do further as citizens to get a response. If our politicians can't get a response, if our agencies are more afraid of getting sued by businesses and that, I, I'm at a loss, and it's very frustrating. And I would like some kind of response from either our township officials, our village officials, because they also are involved as far as the dump. We need somebody to speak up for us, and we brought this to the board before. I know Supervisor Cullis, back in October, had said the township has spent $20,000, I believe at that point, on legal fees, on addressing this, but the other option is, is that we just let this go through at some point in the future, which was predicted back in the 80s and 90s by some of the same positions that are in these agencies currently, some of them were involved then, they're involved now. And they warned about it, and even the Water Resource Commission spent $2.6 million on the Patterson Drain this summer, on improvements. Was anybody informed here at the township that they were doing it? And I'm wondering, you know, I have FOIA'd it.
You're talking about the culvert on Fish Lake Road?
No, I'm talking, there were several things.
How much, you, you said how much money?
$2.6 million.
But I think that was to do with the Fish Lake Road, because the repair that just came out in the mail was 182,000.
Right.
That was a repair bill.
Yep, but that was separate.
That's separate, yeah. But we, we were, we were informed of the work they did on Fish Lake Road, that's part of the work that was done by the, the canoe launch. That's why that road was closed all summer while they did those two projects.
Well, my, my question is, is...
At this point, I think it would behoove us now, with the redistricting, Senator Johnson has moved on, we are no longer in her district, and Lana?
Tice.
Tease, like, like somebody's teasing you? Or Tice, is that how it's pronounced? Lana Tice, it's probably time to sit down and have a meeting with her and bring her on board for that stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? None appearing, we will go ahead and close this meeting at 7:20.